The WebEx is now live.
Good morning and welcome to our February 25th, 2021 Committee Meeting, Virtual Committee Meeting. Horn, Pete, will you please call the Board members?
Yes ma'am. Ms. Chisholm? Mr. West?
Present.
Ms. Jones? Mr. McKeller?
Present.
Ms. Musgrave?
Present.
Ms. Sutton?
Present.
Ms. Van?
Present.
Mr. Warfel? I saw him, let's see. Okay, I think he may have been having a little problem with his sound. He'll, I'm sure he'll join us in just a moment. And Ms. Williams?
Here, I'm present.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm, we're ready to move on.
Thank you. We're happy to have everybody with us this morning. We're now, Ms. Musgrave, to introduce the student presenters. Ms. Musgrave.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Our board members and our listening audience this morning are certainly fortunate to hear from some of Cumberland County's fine students. I would like to call on Chad Barber, the Principal of Cumberland Polytechnic, who is going to introduce the Cumberland Polytechnic students who will be presenting to you this morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Education members, Dr. Conaway, and members of the Cabinet. Throughout my career as an educator, I've realized that the best part of my job was being able to see students put their talents on display. On February 12th, our school celebrated Black History Month. Our SGA advisors, Ms. Rios and Mrs. McKeithen, helped organize an amazing presentation. During the presentation, Francesca Lugo Vargas and Ryan Pickney recited the poem "The Hill We Will Climb" by Amanda Gorman. Hezekiah Bryant performed his own original poem, "My Skin." I must say that their presentations gave me chills and was one of the proudest moments that I've had in my career as an educator. The students were extremely happy when they received the invitation to speak to the school board this morning. It is my honor to present to you three of Cumberland Polytechnic High School's finest students to perform for you today. Brian Pickney and Francesca Lugo Vargas will be reciting "The Hill We Climb" by Amanda Gorman, and Hezekiah Bryant will be performing his original poem, "My Skin." We hope you enjoy the student performances. Francesca and Ryan?
When day comes, we ask ourselves, where can we find light in this never-ending shade? The loss we carry, a sieve must weigh. We brave the belly of the beast. We've learned today that quiet isn't always peace, and the norms and notions of what just is, isn't always justice. And yet the dawn is ours before we knew it, somehow we do it. Somehow, we've weathered and witnessed a nation that isn't broken, but simply unfinished. We, the successors of a country in a time where a skinny black girl descended from slaves and raised by a single mother, could dream of becoming president, only to find herself reciting for one. And yes, we are far from polished, far from pristine, but that doesn't mean we are striving to form a union that is perfect. We are striving to forge our union with purpose. To compose a country committed to all cultures, colors, characters, and conditions of man. And so we lift our gazes not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close this divide because we know to put our future first. We must first put our differences aside. We lay down, we lay down our arms so we can reach out our arms to one another. We seek harm to none and harmony for all. Let the globe, if nothing else, say this is true, that even as we grieved, we grew, that even as we hurt, we tired, that even as we tried, that even as we tired, we tried. That we'll forever be tied together, victorious, not because we will never again know defeat, but because we will never again sow division. Scripture tells us to envision, that everyone shall sit under their own vine and fig tree, and no one shall make them afraid. If we're to live up to our own time, then victory won't lighten the blade. Been in all the bridges we've made, that is the promise to glade. The hill we climb, if only we dare, it's because being American is more than a pride we inherit. It's the path we stepped into, and it's how we repair it.
We've seen a force that would shatter our nation rather than share it, would destroy our country if it meant delaying democracy, and this effort barely nearly succeed. But while democracy can be periodically delayed, it can never be permanently defeated. In this truth, in this faith we trust, while we have our eyes on the future, history has its eyes on us. This is the era of just redemption. We feared at its deception. We did not feel prepared to be the heirs of such a terrifying hour, but within it, we found the power to author a new chapter, to offer hope and laughter to ourselves. So while once we asked, how could we possibly prevail over catastrophe? Now we assert, how could catastrophe possibly prevail over us? We will not march back to what was, but move to what shall be. A country that is bruised but whole, benevolent but bold, fierce and free, will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation, because we know our inaction and inertia will inherit the next generation. Our blunders become their burdens, but one thing is certain, if we merge mercy with might and might with right, then love becomes our legacy and change our children's birthright. So, let us leave behind a country better than one we were left with. Every breath from my bronze pounded chest will raise this wounded world into a wonder. We will rise through the golden hills in the west. We will rise from the windswept northeast where our forefathers first realized revolution. We will rise from the late rim cities of the Midwestern states. We will rise from the sun-baked south. We will rebuild, reconcile, and recover in every known nook of our nation, in every corner called our country. Our people diverse and beautiful will emerge battered and beautiful. When day comes, we step out of the shade, aflame and unafraid. The new dawn blooms as we flee, for there is always light, if only we're brave enough to see, if only we're brave enough to be.
My skin, black as the dirt in the forest, but it is not dirty. Leaving with me in the womb, I only got darker as I grew. My skin, ashy as ever, even though my mom begged me to lotion up after I got out the shower. My skin teased in school by my peers. The lights are off. Where did Hezekiah go? Names I became familiar with. My skin followed around in public places. Make sure you pay for that. Even though I had money in my pocket, my skin pinpointed in a group of my white peers. I stand out only because I'm standing in, a group of people who don't look like me. My skin verbally abused and physically assaulted, but not because I was the aggressor. My skin is wrapping tights around my body, choking me. I can't breathe. 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 My skin is supposed to protect my most sensitive organs, not be a factor in my life or death. My skin feels the pain of my ancestors whipped and lashed on their backs, longing for a getaway, longing for an escape, longing for freedom. My skin is wearing thin from all the burdens it must carry. My skin will be disadvantaged in society because the higher-ups feel I don't fit. But my skin will prevail because it is resilient, and it has lasted through every cut, scratch, and bruise. My skin will heal itself and come back stronger, letting the sun nourish me. My skin is me, and no one will stop that.
Thank you, Mr. Barber, for bringing your students to share with us this morning. I'm sure that was enlightening for all who listened.
That's all of the presentations. We want to thank the young people for three beautiful presentations, and we enjoyed, we enjoyed having you with us this morning. Keep up the good work. I entertain a vote on item 1.03.
I move that effective this meeting only to waive any requirements that board members participate in meeting, in the meeting in person, and to ratify and formally adopt the virtual meeting format described in the meeting notice.
Second. Has been moved in second that we accept 1.03. Pete, will you please?
Yes ma'am. Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mr. McKeller?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Van?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm, that was unanimous.
Thank you. Ms. Pete, we will now move to 2.00, Ms. Van, Curriculum Committee.
All right, I'd like to call the Curriculum Committee to order, and our members are myself, Ms. Jones, Ms. Sutton, and Ms. Williams. I will call for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
A second.
All right, it was properly moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Jones. Pete?
Ms. Van?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Van, that was unanimous.
All right, and 2.03, approval of January 28th Curriculum Committee Minutes.
I move that we approve the January 28th Curriculum Minutes.
Second. All right, it was a motion by Ms. Sutton and seconded by Ms. Williams, and if you'll take the vote.
Okay, Ms. Van?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Sutton? And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Van, that was unanimous.
All right, now this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Wilson Norman and Mr. Phillips to talk to us a little bit about 2021 Summer School.
Good morning. We have one item, and Mr. Phillips will provide us with an update. This is something that we bring annually in reference to our summer school related to our EOG opportunities for retesting, and so I'll turn it over to Mr. Phillips at this time.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is our annual presentation to the board for our summer school, for the purpose of being able to test, allow students to take, have a second opportunity at the EOC and the EOG. This is not summer school. That is the long four, five, six-week version of summer school. This is what we do immediately after the last day of school, and we're allowed to allow our students to take the end of course and the end of grade test if they did not pass it. They have to go through a brief summer school period, which we do that after the results come back from the scanning of the tests. The teachers get individual student reports, and those individual student reports are very specific about what a student mastered and what they did not master, and then the teachers are able to really focus in on those areas that the student had a weakness in. They normally have four or five days to really work on this. Then the last day of school will come, and then we're allowed to then bring the students back and provide a day of review and then do our summer school testing. So the whole process actually takes about a week after school is out, and then the summer school testing for this part is done. We've done this now, this will be the fifth year that we've done it in Cumberland County. Obviously, we did not do it last year because we were out of school and there were no tests given, but we would like to follow the same schedule that we have followed in the previous years, so that we're not disrupting the students' summer, and we're not taking them out of end of year, any kind of activities that they would have. We're not, we're not gonna pull them out of that kind of stuff. But this does give us an opportunity to provide the detailed and focused remediation while the students are still on campus, and then let them come back, and then we do one day of review and we can then test. We've had really, really good results. I pulled some numbers. Over the four years, we have had about a 20 and a half percent, or 21% almost, success rate with the students who take the ELA test over in math. It's about 16%, and our grade five and grade eight science, 31.7%, and then the high school students that come back and have the second opportunity for the EOCs, the pass rate is about 26.7%, which is really, really strong considering that all of these were non-proficient when the first tests were given. So we have for you a consider item that we would ask that you approve, that we can continue to run our abbreviated summer school at the end of the school year and allow the students the opportunity to take the test again if they choose to do that. It's optional for everyone. And that is our presentation. Ms. Van?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any questions? And I'm glad you clarified, because that's the first thing I asked Dr. Wilson Norman, because we're hearing things from the state about summer school, but this is not it. This is our normal, every-year EOG, EOC, summer school.
Right.
Okay. All right, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right. Motion by Ms. Sutton and seconded by Ms. Williams. Pete, if you'll take the vote.
Okay, Ms. Van?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Van, that was unanimous.
All right, are there any other committee concerns?
Just a few.
Go ahead.
Just a few quick updates. Our marching bands will begin practicing next week, that we like our clubs to start on March 15th when school reopens, and that our JROTC will begin practicing in alignment with the guidance from their governing bodies. So each branch has a different set of rules, but in alignment with the governing body's rules, we like our JROTCs to begin as well. And so those are just a few announcements for some of our extracurriculars.
Wonderful. Anybody else? Well, at this time, I will adjourn the Curriculum Committee and turn it over to Mrs. Sutton for personnel.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Van. Those on the committee are myself, Judy Musgrave, Mr. Warfel, and Suda Sun Williams. And Mr. Reyes is with us, and I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion for Ms. Sutton and a second for Mr. Warfel. Ms. Horn, will you record the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sutton? Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams, you were muted, but I know you've been. Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous.
Okay, very good. 3.03, Consider Approval of the January 28th, 2021 Personnel Committee Minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 3.03.
Okay, motion from Ms. Williams, second from Ms. Musgrave.
Okay.
Pete, will you record it? Okay.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Okay, 3.04, Consider Approval of Personnel. I make a motion that we approve 3.04.
Second.
We have a motion for Ms. Sutton and a second for Ms. Williams. Pete, will you record the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous.
And 3.05, Consider Approval of Leaves of Absence and Special Leaves of Absence. I entertain a motion.
Moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Musgrave?
Second.
Second, Mr. Warfel. Pete, would you record the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous.
Thank you, Pete. And 3.06.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask Ruben if he has some additional ones. I noticed that he was listed for 3.4. Additional one was listed, Ruben.
No, ma'am, I have 3.04, which was the personnel list, and then we were looking at 3.05, which was the Leave of Absences.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay. 3.06, Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations. I entertain a motion.
I make a motion for the approval of administrative recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Musgrave?
Second.
Okay. I'll give it to you, Ms. Williams, a second for Ms. Williams. Pete, would you record the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Pete. And 3.07, I think Mr. Reyes is here to present that. Consider Approval of the Limited License Request.
Yes, ma'am. This is very similar to previous requests that we've received. These requests involve staff members who, who may have not passed their licensure examinations, but do have a track record of effectiveness here in the district, and so what we are asking is that you give approval so we can apply for a special limited license for them. That license will limit them to working in Cumberland County schools as a teacher, and it will give them an extension in which to pass their licensure examination. So it does not waive the requirement, but it does provide additional time for them to pass that based on the fact that they have been deemed effective.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes. I entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Williams?
Second.
Second from Ms. Musgrave. If there's no discussion, Pete, would you record the vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous.
Very good. And 3.08, we will receive this information from Mr. Reyes on student enrollment data.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. At this time, what I would like to do is to ask Mr. Phillips to present. I'm gonna share this document on the screen, but Mr. Phillips has compiled this data and will share the data with the board.
Good morning again, everyone. This, what I would like to share with you this morning is a review of the Principal Monthly Report. A lot of times, you may hear it referred to as a PMR. You'll hear PMR 1, PMR 2, PMR 3. Those are the, the months that are submitted, enrollment data that are, is submitted at the end of a monthly period, and it's not necessarily a calendar month. For example, PMR 1 and PMR 2 always are required to be the first 20 days of school, and this is what the North County Department of Public Instruction uses to establish a school system's ADM, or their average daily membership. They'll take the higher of the two when they look at the Principal Monthly Report. So what I wanted to do, and because I'd heard a lot of talk about the enrollment numbers, and so I wanted to actually share with you what our numbers look like over the last three years. So Ruben is gonna click for me, and I'm gonna go through the slides, and I'll explain what's on each one. The first Principal Monthly Report, again, this was after the first 20 days of school, and I did this for the last three years to show you, our enrollment after the first 20 days this school year, 2021, was 48,536 students in 2019, 20, 1920, I'm sorry, 2019, 2020, it was 49,962, and then 2018, 2019, it was 50,022. And to show you how that is declining or increasing, on the next slide, you'll see, if you read from the bottom up, in 1819, we were at 50,022. Then in 1920, at the end of the first PMR, we were at 49,69962. That was 60 students less in 2019, 20, than we had the year before. This year, at the end of PMR 1, we were at 48,536. So that's 1,426 students less than what we had at the beginning of the, at the end of the first reporting period in 2019, 20. So you can see that we were down about, we're down actually 1,426 students. So I wanted to compare, that's after the first report, that's after the first 20 days. Then months, months 3 through 9, they can be 16, 17, 18 days. It depends on how the month and the days of school are in a month. But I wanted to take the last Principal's Monthly, Principal Monthly Report that we had, that was certified, and that was the PMR 4. And again, I did the numbers again. You can see we're at 48,664 at the end of PMR 4, which would have been the end of November. 2020, we were at 49,937, and at 2019, we were at 49,400. And the next slide, again, if you'll read from the bottom up, you'll notice that we were at 49,400 in 1819, at the end of November. Then in 1920, we had 537 more students than we did in 2019. And then this year, at the end of November, we have 48,664 students, and that's 1,273 students. And that, when I typed this, it was not yet certified. These numbers have been certified, so they are official numbers now. So you can see where we were 1,400 less at the beginning of the year, we're now about, we're 1,273 less. And so what I want to do is dig a little bit deeper and see, could we identify who the students were, why our enrollment was down, and I could see there was a big dip in kindergarten, and had heard some other districts saying they were seeing the same thing. So I pulled the PMR and singled in only on kindergarten to look and see what the kindergarten numbers looked like and what the trends were. And you can see, 1819, we had 4,019 students at the end of PMR 1 that were kindergartners. In 1920, that number was 4,084. And then this year, at the end of PMR 1, we only had 3,364. Again, just following the same slides like we were doing before, if we'd start at the bottom and go up, so we went from 4,019 to 1,819. So we went from 4,019 in 1819 at the end of the first 20 days. Last year, when we looked at the same time period, we had 65 more kindergarteners than we had the year before. And this year, when we look at the number of kindergarteners that we have compared to where we were last year, at the end of the first 20 days, we have 720 less kindergarteners in Cumberland County than we had at the beginning of the year last year. Wanted to see if those trend lines held, so we looked at our PMR 4, which was the end of November. And you can see there again, 4,018, then last year it was 4,114, this year 3,318. And again, to see the change over the three years, you can see that in, at this time last year, there were 96 more kindergarteners than we had in the previous year. And then this year, at the end of November or the end of PMR 4, we have 796 less than we had last year, which is almost 800 students. And so when we looked at this, looked at the number of students that we knew were missing in Cumberland County schools, we have 1,273 fewer students enrolled than we did a year earlier. And of that number, 796 are kindergarteners. And so really, the decrease of enrollment in Cumberland County schools by kindergarteners alone accounts for 62.5% of our enrollment decline. The grades 1 through 12 account for the other 38%. So even through these difficult times, I think you can see that the majority of our students have stayed with us. We've lost 400 or 500 students over the year, and I was looking at the decline of what we had that were leaving the district. But the issue that we see are kindergarteners that either never enrolled in Cumberland County schools in kindergarten, or if they enrolled, they never showed up, and so they were not captured in our membership file. And I wanted to share this information with you so you could see it, because I know there's a lot of talk about what our enrollment looks like in Cumberland County schools. And just thought that this would be an appropriate time to bring this for you and share this data. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Phipps, I'll add that this potentially means that next year, our kindergarten has the potential to be very large. Those parents who are devoted kindergarteners that could have come this year, but they're banned next year, which will have very large classes, but within the rules of kindergarten.
And Dr. Conley, can you share with us the demographics, if you know them?
Mr. Phipps, I think you took a look at some of that data, right?
I did. Ms. Sutton, what I, what I looked at earlier, when I was trying to pull the data, is to see if we had any trends of the students who were moving out of the county, or who were moving out of the state, or who might have been going to, in the county, going to charter schools or private schools. And I've broken that down, but I don't, I just have the percentages overall, like where they went. I did not break that down specifically, demographics by all those categories, but I can get that for you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Ron, Dr. Conley, and Ruben, I am so glad you guys brought this this morning, because I know a lot of us has been hearing all type of chatter, that we've had this mass exit from the district, and it was just misinformation. And I'm glad you clarified it. If we have, any child that's not here, any one child, we definitely miss that child, but nothing like some of the misinformation that has gone out. Even with the 1,400 kids, if we divide that by 88 schools, and my math this morning, what, that's averaging about 16 kids per school? So I'm very proud of that, that our, our students have stayed with us, contrary to the information that we've been receiving from the, from people. So thank you so much for bringing that. Is there any more questions from the committee or discussion from Mr. Reyes or Mr. Phipps?
Ms. Sutton, I would just like to share, you know, as, as we're working on our allocations, we do local projections, and we also do states, and the state also provides projections. Typically, we're, we're, we're pretty close, and this year, locally, we projected us to be at about 49,875 kids for next year. The state projected us at 49,900. So when you look at Ron's presentation, I believe in the first slide, he showed PMR 1 from last year had us at about 49,900. So the state is projecting, you know, a rebound in enrollment as we transition into the next school year.
Very good.
And Ms. Sutton, I would add to your question for Ron, that in general, what we see is that families that have the means to opt for private school in that number, that's who has done that. But we anticipate that even some of those would not be able to sustain that below home, and potentially will be returning to us when we reopen in person, and when we reopen next year. So we feel very good about our numbers overall.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Dr. Conley. Are there any more discussions about 3.09? Any other committee members? This is really good information this morning. If not, we'll move on to 3.09. This is a closed session. I entertain a motion for closed session. Okay, I'll make that motion pursuant to, to pursue the confidentiality of matters protected from disclosure pursuant to Jones Statute 115C-319, and to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to North Carolina Jones Statute 143318. Point 1183, uh, this is a closed session motion that I'm making. I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion from, and a second from Ms. Williams. If there's no objection, Pete, would you record the vote please?
Yes ma'am, Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous. We just want to remind everybody to please take your cameras off and mute your microphones, and, and you have the number to call in. Thank you.
Okay, we're in closed session.
I think that both of um I just
Okay. I 'Kay.
Pete, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, Carrie, we can hear you.
Very good. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Oh, she has to dial back in.
Pete, just let me know when you're ready, when everybody's back.
Okay, I'm gonna count them up now. Four, five, six, seven, eight. Trying to figure out who we're missing.
I don't see Mr. McKeller. He's on the line.
His name is up here, but I'm...
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so... Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Mr. McKeller, can you hear us? Are you with us?
Still, you can tell on the screen.
As soon as we have contact with Mr. McKeller, we'll be ready to start again.
Okay.
Technology is making contact with Mr. McKeller right now.
Okay.
Since he's not on the personnel, can we just go ahead? He might have...
That's what I was thinking.
Can't we just go ahead and move forward?
That's perfectly fine, Ms. Sutton. It's completely up to you.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we come out of closed session.
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Ms. Van and a second from Mr. Woffel. Pete, will you record the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Smith-Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Woffel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sutton, that was unanimous to come out of closed session.
I just want to say that the motion was made by Ms. Williams, not Ms. Van.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Van. Okay, and Dr. Conley, if you own, I'm gonna turn it over to you for your recommendations and...
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Ms. Sutton and Madam Chair, board members, I would like to share the administrative transfer of Mr. Larry J. Hoffman, Jr., who is the current principal of Woffel-Smiley Elementary, to be the new principal at Red Raw's Classical Middle and High School.
Thank you, Dr. Conley.
That's all I have, Ms. Sutton.
Okay, all right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to 3.10. Are there any other committee concerns?
Ms. Sutton, no other committee concerns. However, I would like to share that we are in the process of completing our district allocations for our schools for next year. We do anticipate those being distributed tomorrow. So I just wanted to let the board know that we are moving forward with our allocations process for the 21-22 school year. As I indicated, you know, we are using those projections that I shared with you earlier to ensure that our allocations are out and our schools can begin planning for next year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rayet.
And Ms. Sutton, as of yesterday, 3,576 staff members have received a vaccine, plus those who may have received it in other places that we may not be aware of.
Okay, very good. And we encourage all our people to get the vaccine.
This is Charles McKeller. Can everyone hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, I can't. Okay. Go ahead. I'll just, now that I'm, at least I have a voice. Julie? They can hear me. I don't know if they can see me or not.
All righty. I think you're good to go. I was just told you were back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, for the record, I voted to come out of closed session.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and Dr. Conley, will you finish with your statement?
Yes, ma'am. I'm finished.
Okay, we do encourage everyone to take the vaccine. I'm going soon as I hang up to get my second dose. So I'm encouraging everybody that's listening to go ahead and get your vaccine. Nothing's gonna fall off your body. It's another layer of protection for you. And if there's nothing else, Ms. Chisholm, I'll turn it over to you for adjourn, and I adjourn this Personnel Committee.
So much. And to add to Ms. Sutton, I've had both of my doses. And I'm doing fine. So we do encourage you to get it so that you protect yourself, your family, and we protect each other. And as I told them in video, if we all do this and do those three things that they tell us, we can get through this safely together. I personally would hate to lose any of you. So please go get your vaccine and do whatever it is for yourself's sake and your family's sake. That was something I always wanted, was to be able to get our staff safe. I said because they need to be safe. They say the children don't transfer. Some of them do. But anyway, not that many, not hardly any, but that's enough of that. I'm glad Dr. Conley gave the number because I was wondering what it was up to now. Dr. Conley, do you have me in that number? Because I didn't get mine at your school.
No, ma'am. That's just the number at, that's just the number at... Beatty and E.E. Smith.
Yeah.
So, I'm not saying there are people such as yourself that have not, other places that are not in that number. So in general, we are well on our way to all our staff members who wanted the vaccine. It's a personal choice, but we provide the opportunity for everyone to be able to get it. We intend.
And so can get it to those who desire, right?
Yes, ma'am. Board members, support staff, everyone, must drivers, everyone, even our substitutes and our contractors. We have made it work nationally as well.
Good, good. The more we reach out, the more people we get, the better the community is. Thank you very much. Thank you all for y'all's indulgence this morning. We almost made two out. Anyway, anybody else have any other comments they would like to make or questions or concerns? Y'all always like y'all to go. Well, they pay to laugh. Pays to be a laugh, laugh. Boston is good for the soul. Okay, then no other business before this board. This committee meeting on February 25th is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a safe day and be safe and well.